All right, we'll start this meeting. Is there any agenda additions or deletions? I see, yeah, I see here that we want to have an executive session for personnel.
Yes.
Later on today, so is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All right, anybody opposed? Approval of the August 5th minutes, they were passed around. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Uh-oh, here comes Ashley.
I'll be able to hear.
Oh, that is. All right, Highway, what do you have?
The only thing I got to bring up is transfer station, the cardboard bin. If we're also going over there once, twice a week, crush it down with the payloaders. Is there any way to get another cardboard bin so we have two and alternate them back forth so we're not taking so much time going over there just to crush the cardboard and the metal bin all the time? I just didn't know where this at with our contract stuff.
I would say it's just a request to Casella.
I would say yes, let's do that.
I mean, I'll make a motion to authorize Ashley to reach out to Casella to find out if we can get a second cardboard bin.
Second.
Any further discussion? Are you hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, what else, anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay. Approval of Select Board Morens?
You got somebody in the back?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to talk to Cash. And look, we live on Cedar Drive, my name is Harry Whittington. I've talked to Cash several times. He said something about getting the brush hog fixed. I don't, I just don't understand. It's something I've heard that all summer on things getting fixed and my road looks like a swamp up there on Cedar Drive, but he did stop and said that it was being taken care of. And there was also damage from the previous road commissioner, Darryl Tripp, where he dug my ditch out in front of my house. And I've lost like 10 or 12 trees in front of my house, they're all dying from him digging all the ditch out with the excavator and, you know. I went to the meeting last year and I asked about maybe having that fixed. I know that the town's been busy with other things, but I'd like to see if I could get a dressing point that's in the spring of next year.
Yes, you want to...
Is there an update on the, on the mower? I thought I...
As far as the mower, Eddie Baker's been working on it. He can give you an update right here. He's actually here tonight.
Got another fitting coming tomorrow. Been a retro fit from gone here, the rock shaft valve splits inside. So, it's nothing simple about it. It's like trying to eat a steak with your ears. I think tomorrow will know. The big thing is when we fire this thing up, it's been four or five years with this problem. What else is going to be affected because it does the steering, it does the brakes. I won't know until I fire it. But sure, we got the problem. Now just correct the rest of it. So hopefully tomorrow we'll have a point one next year coming up. I just got it basically beginning last week and I took time to get it fired from gone here, so. No, it seems like every year, it's, I know it's not Cash's fault or whatever, he does whatever he can, but, you know, this has been going on for like eight or 10 years dealing with this brush hog and, you know, it's kind of dangerous. I like to ride my motorcycle and you got gears popping out into grass in front of you, you know. It's just kind of nice to have it all mowed. I know they rented one or sucked one out for a week or two and might have been getting mowed, so.
Cash, is there any way to mitigate some of that issue up there?
I don't know.
No, it's a deep trench right there.
We'll have to figure something else in. I don't know. The entire dugout thing is put material in there, I don't think they're gonna be able to hold it.
Well, I don't know if there's some shock rock or whatever in there that would stop all them, it's like, it's all like a swamp up there in front of my house. I used to be able to mow around all them trees up there and now it's like, the whole bank's disintegrating and all them poppy trees on the edge of the road, they're all dead, so.
Is that ever stopped?
No.
Where?
That pole or, that ditch was only like about three feet deep. Then I come home one day from the college of St. Joseph's and it's like eight foot deep all the way down, probably 200 feet down the road, dug out like that.
When was that bought? Seven, eight years old?
Well, it's before your time. I don't, we wouldn't have dug it out like that. That's when Darryl was Mr. Tripp or whatever his name is, or he was the road commissioner or...
So, would, is there a velocity issue of water that's causing the emergency?
Hardly any water. There is water, but not a lot at all. But the thing is, packing dirt back out of the bank material, how are you gonna get it to stay? Well, your road should just slant down the bank. The way is to put shock rock in there.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, so Harry's suggestion of rock, I mean...
You're looking at $3,000, $3,000 worth of rock.
To, to basically put it on the edge of the bank?
To get it built out.
Well, I feel he created the damage to my property.
So the town should be responsible.
Absolutely, because, you know, this, if I came mowing, it just looks horrible up there.
And with that, to me, that, with that expense, I'd like to have a site visit with the whole select board so they can see what...
To look at it?
To look at it. You know, it's not like it's gonna be a two-load fix, a load fix, you know, 200 bucks, 500 bucks.
Okay.
Let's go take a look at it.
Set up the time and...
So...
I don't think it needs to be done this year because, you know, it's already almost into September and he's got a plowing season to get ready for and stuff like that. I understand that maybe like next year in the spring or early summer it could be somewhat addressed.
Can, can we also check and see that, was that area identified as MRGP or not?
No.
It wasn't? Okay. Just curious.
It's not connected.
Even, I mean, like even on the lower priority lists, was it on that or his road? Yeah.
No.
No.
It's, uh, oh, Ashley, I mean, not, not hydroically connected.
Connected, yeah, okay.
But I'd still like to have a meeting, at least three members up there to take a look at that.
Yeah.
And then report back at the following meeting.
Yeah.
So, anytime, you know, this week or next, if we can get...
Now, I guess my last question, are the popples in the road town right away that we need to take care of what has died?
We got a bunch of them that are right on the edge of the roadside right there that are all, they're all dead. There's like three or four of them that are dead.
Okay.
They follow up and they're gonna go under the power lines. I feel that I shouldn't have to pay for having them cut down.
So, at the site, as I was saying, that means we can look at that too.
It's pretty much not North Shrewsbury Road, I can live with that because it's driven next to the road, but, you know, I just mowed right there and we whacked that, but it's just going down Cedar Drive. It's just kind of...
And to get back, get back to the moment and stuff, I actually did that on Sunday up there because of low, low traffic volume. Made one pass all around town up there. I did pull into Cedar, went down, I think your driveway, if I remember right, and then back out.
Yeah, I don't think that mower was working very correctly.
Because I did a very poor job.
I probably could have done a better job in my zero term.
So, I mean, the other question that I would have, just to keep it on, so, I mean, obviously, it sounds like Eddie, you'll have an update for us probably next meeting?
Probably tomorrow.
Okay. Cause I guess my other question is, is if...
If they...
If, if it can't be fixed, do you think we should reach back out and see if we can get another week with the machine or...
With that same machine?
No, that machine we said wasn't worth the money we paid for it.
On what?
Is there anybody else that does that?
Actually get hold of it.
You think, you think we're, I mean, it's just a fallout, right? It's what, what else might be wrong?
I'm probably gonna run that a little bit, make sure it's not...
You gotta, you gotta run it.
Well, yeah, you're not gonna know till you...
And the thing is, even right now with that cracked valve, you could actually run it for two, three hours.
And that would happen?
And she'd get hot. Things would happen. Blow holes and everything else and build pressure.
Mr. Chair, I think that we try to come up with a conclusion here that we're gonna go visit.
Yeah, I think site visit's important.
You guys on my cell phone, I'm sure Cash has it or whatever. He's been pretty helpful when I'm looking at the stuff up there and I talked with him several times and stuff like that.
Actually, his driveway culvert, got to be cleaned out a little bit, ended across culvert beyond that.
Okay. So we'll wait to hear about site visit and those that can go, can go?
Yep.
Yeah, I want to have at least three.
Okay.
Keep that in mind.
I'd like to be the president of the meeting once one floor shows up if you guys...
Yep.
He has it or...
Cash is gonna set up the time, so he...
We'll make sure you know.
You tell you know.
Okay. Let's get down to old business that, with you, you guys, Select Board signed a resolution to apply for the VCVP planning grant. Let's have that discussion right now so folks don't have to sit here. First of all, we'll have a little conversation. Do you want to say anything, Rob, about what we heard tonight or...
Um, well, I guess from my perspective, I appreciate hearing about what's available. I, I'm gonna be honest, I am disappointed that it sounds like there were some administrative things on the front end that led to some problems in the town office and probably could have been handled much better, to put it politely. So, I personally hope that if this goes through going forward, that we don't have those administrative problems going forward. I hope that we see things much more smooth and that, I understand you're under a deadline. I understand things get crazy when you're under deadlines, but if something's released to the public, it's gotta be accurate. So, that's, that's a must. So, in a state where we get a reputation for not being business friendly, I think this is a step to be more business friendly. So, I guess I for one, just making our comments down the line, hope that we, we at Clarendon can be a part of fostering more business and being a part of that.
Good, very well said. And you, Art, do you have any more questions or...
Nope, I've said all I'm gonna say.
George, you?
Well, what I can say is that if you recall, earlier Elizabeth Rehman talked about the project of closing up some mobile home parks, which was funded by the same revenue of money. And I was the Select Board member at the time that was working with her to resolve moving people and getting them set up in new places, buying homes, all kinds of things. And it worked extremely well and it was very smooth in terms of transitioning through the process. And I think it came in, if I remember correctly, under the money requested for. So, my experience with the, with the work that they've done in the past was very good. So my recommendation, based on that experience, plus the need that has been explained and I agree with, is that we should proceed with this.
Do you have anything, Cash?
Right to George, proceed with it. For growth, the only thing that bothers me is the labor part. Depends on the company, how they bring their employees in.
I entertain a motion then, to sign this.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. And there's, do all of us have to sign this?
And the clerk as well.
Yes, and the clerk as well. All right, so, motion passed. And let me start. What's that?
Look at this.
I wanted to make sure there's a blank that needs to get filled in here. Who are you going to appoint as your quote-unquote CEO? Would be a town manager or municipal authorizing official, that needs to be.
Ashley's in the office all the time.
Was.
It's gotta be a...
It's gotta be the chair.
She's listed on there too.
Chairman of the board, probably.
Who's, who's currently, so it says that it's designated to, the person is designated to serve as the municipal authorizing official in the grants management system. Who's our...
Mike.
That's Mike? Okay.
Play with target? All right.
Thank you.
All right, we'll, we'll be passing that along.
You're disappointed if we go home, right?
Yeah.
Well, I thought you guys brought some refreshments. Remember, I like cookies.
I'm chocolate chip man myself, but...
What we need with it? What we have with we need?
We're going to. We're very grateful for your support and your understanding, your challenge to do better. We will.
Here you go, sign it. I have to sign it last.
Any more public comments?
Yeah, but I guess down the wall there.
Don't see any.
I gotta guarantee you that you guys are...
All right, thank you for coming and saying that stuff.
Yeah, right.
Old business. Fitzgerald Cold River Plan.
Okay, what take is today?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six?
Yep. Says it on green paper.
Ashley, I assume you got this from Fitzgerald?
Yes.
You wanna get us up to speed?
Basically, this is what we had gone over already during our meeting and we were, you know, moving forward with Fitzgerald to go ahead with their management plan. However, he sent this update, the proposal, and we had originally thought it was anywhere from $7,000 to $10,000 for this. It's both up to $15,000. However, it includes the project startup, you know, gathering the data that's needed, you know, attending the meeting, warrant, top graphic, surveys, data processing and preparation. And then it also will include the actual river management plan itself.
If I can recheck a little bit on that, we asked them to do a plan to vote for grants that would fix that corridor of the river, which is Parrot One, which is 851. The additional portion is a long-term maintenance plan that's added to it.
That was requested previously.
Which will come afterwards.
It can come afterwards, yeah.
This one? Yeah.
Danny, do you know if we need to have both done before we can apply for a grant for the...
I think just the original.
Just the original one? We'll get it.
Well, I don't know if it actually has to be done. We're, we're applying right now.
Elizabeth, you do what? You wanna take this video or what?
Get the grant.
Right there. Yes.
And luckily that would be... I don't think so. And luckily that should be completed before the official grant application for the HMGP grant in January.
So, either way, our budget has to front the 15. Is that the best way, which we have 10 in the budget now?
Right.
So we gotta come up with the other five.
I believe that. I think you have to front the 85. It's the plan for that river.
Okay, cause...
In the report order.
Where'd I see?
The part two is a long-term maintenance program.
Yeah. Cause the second page says something about a lump sum payment of $15,000.
Well, on the first page here, we got...
Yeah, I know the first page breaks it down, but it says that a lump sum fee of $15,000 will be due on the second page.
Second page or so.
Top of the second page.
Oh, I missed that.
Oh, it's professional.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the...
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't really say it needs to be a one, a one lump.
Right. I'm not sure what the requisition was from the town initially when they said we want a plan. I'm not sure what the wording was or...
Yeah.
What you got, what you really asked for.
I guess it just needs to be prepared that if it goes over the 10, we've gotta have a plan.
Yeah, I think that's a discussion we need to have. We're not here.
I think it might just, like George, prepare a clarification.
Yeah.
On, on the two parts.
Well, I mean, it also gives a timeline where it talks about the other one not being due June 30 anyway.
Right.
So it might be that the next round's not gonna be due until the next fiscal year anyway, which is the separation of...
And a maintenance plan wouldn't be pretty good as grant anyway.
And we still, the brick funding is still up in the air, so...
That's still up in the air.
That can go maybe against the 6,500.
And what I've seen from this, this round of grants or since Miguel came and talked to us like eight, 12 weeks ago, some of the stuff has changed and I believe, does this even have a portion in it that said that may be a part of the plan?
It could, possibly.
Yeah. We haven't got this specific. It's very general and as you can see from that.
So Dan is referring to the HMGP grant, not the river grant?
Right.
Okay.
So he's asking for authorization to get started, essentially what, what it looks like is saying to me. You understand, see?
Well, it looks like we can have the board sign it.
The board, the board chair signs it.
Yeah.
All right, is there a motion? So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Right here, and all those favored motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
You got the stuff to say. Oh, did you include having any more?
Yes, I thought you did.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Ashley, when it comes to the grant, are you looking for what we should be filling in for these? Is that why we have them or...
Yes, so, a little bit on wording, and I want to thank Dan because he has been a huge help on this and reaching out to people and, you know, really getting me kind of up to speed with everything. And he definitely has more, you know, we need some help with exactly how to, how you wanna word the problem and then the project description for the Cold River, for applying.
Well, I mean, based on what we've talked about, I think it's, we were talking road resilience, cause we're talking about protecting Middle Road and potentially to get the bridge. So road resilience is, is definite, I would say. The other one I think that we could make claims for is the floodplain restoration, I think, because in the process of doing this, we, we're not talking probably complete restoration, but you are gonna, the work that's gonna be done is gonna be involved with the floodplain. So I would think you could make the case that that's part of what we're doing too.
Actually, Evan, Evan recommended go, go for, for the road resilience.
Yeah. I didn't know if you could pick more than one or if you had to go with just one.
He said just don't, if anything, don't go with other and come up with a solution. But his recommendation was go with road resilience and protection, you know, of the Middle Road Bridge, north and south.
Which I think, I mean, that makes the most sense to me. I think road commissioner would probably agree with that too.
Yeah, and this, with this here, is that giving the river more capacity, not just stabilizing banks?
Well, what you gotta do is what you explain what you wanna do with road resilience.
So that, it needs a description beyond that of what...
On the next page, number eight, problem to be addressed. Because you wanna keep the volume of the water going toward that bridge rather than going other way.
Within the channel itself.
Yep.
When did we actually get these here? This first I've seen here.
I think like three weeks ago.
Really?
Not really. That's a lie.
Perfect, thank you.
So if we go with road resilience, what further guidance are you looking for from us tonight, Ashley?
Just how we want to word the problem to be addressed. I mean, what Dan and I had gone over was reinforcing the northeast and then southeast river entrance to abutments to the bridge, removal of sediment to historic riverbed values, right?
And I, and I would add Cash's language to that so that the river restores its volume. Cause, cause right now the volume's not there.
Capacity.
Cause that river needs the capacity to move the water that it can't right now.
Right.
That's the issue.
Well, that's what we're...
As it's built up, it can't move water.
Yeah, you sort of need the eloquent answer.
Yeah.
To that question. And it involves the north embutment entrance, it involves the south embutment entrance, which was disturbed in Irene.
Irene.
North one two years ago.
Yeah.
Or a year ago. And then it has to deal with sediment getting taken out, but it also has to do with armoring the south bank and so it stays in the river channel. And with taking out the sediment, you increase the volume and the capacity that makes the river and keep it heading into the where it's supposed to go.
But that pile that's in the middle, that's what their real concern is because it's spreading and it's, it's spreading the river coming down.
Well, it's supposed to, but it also, and then what it does is it turns it toward the embutment, embankments rather than toward the river itself or bridge itself.
Yep.
And by doing, just doing that one section is gonna indict the, the rest of the, all the way to the outer creek. So it needs to be done all the way down to creek.
Yeah.
And a lot of that sediment came right out the south bank too, because it's just migrating high water for high water. To the south, we're lucky it hasn't gone over.
See how high up it is underneath the railroad bridge?
Yeah, the problem is that we can't dress south of the main bridge the way this ramp is.
You mean east, west of it?
The night she walked in here and was addressing town in general, restoring river corridors, I could swear without that list. That's why I sort of piqued my attention, caught my, or basically caught my attention. But the wording of things through like three or four revisions has changed. That's why we're circumventing...
From, from my memory from some past discussions, probably the term of restoring the corridor has to do with the fact that the state or whoever is concerned that we're gonna have people down in there digging like crazy to make a ditch 10 feet or 10 miles deep or whatever. And so I think that's why that's disappeared, is to prevent the folks of taking action.
Have we gotten ahold of E-Trans to talk about the railroad bridge?
I mentioned it to a couple guys, they're, that's not their concern.
Yeah, of course it's not. Till, till it's gone.
Till it's gone.
When it's gone, it will be.
Then they'll fix it.
Well, I think if you have a river's plan, which we're looking at through Fitzgerald Engineering.
Yep.
It, it doesn't need benchmarks and then they work with A and R and E-Trans and everybody else to meet, just meet those benchmarks. So it's not a, it wouldn't be a free problem. But those were some of the bullet points to restoring the capacity for that bridge is removal of material, armoring entrances on the north and the south side and armoring the south curvature as it comes down through. The north side, we want to, and it may even go a little further up, this plan, as it does... Um, as it does, maybe, and I think right in there, there's a, uh, might be a, uh, third or fourth page you would, where there are some engineered, um, um, log, uh, log retaining law that actually, um, pu- push water, aim water toward the floodplain that they opened up that really, in my opinion, hasn't worked yet. Just by, the only thing that's really gone off that is backwash from the bridge not being able to take the capacity.
So how are we going to get this thing written? What's, what's, what do we need to do?
Can we, should we have him come down here and have us sit down with us to help write this?
No, I think it's...
Because anytime we do...
No, I think it's, you gotta, um, we just have a few statements and some key words and you guys look at it and we go for it. Cause it's due the, it's due on Friday.
So are you, are you two, uh...
I think if I just put it together and send it to, maybe even Robert, he's very good with the wording, um, when it comes...
Yeah, I think send it to Robert. I'll send it to all five members and myself.
Well, yeah, just to...
We'll, we'll send it and add to it or whatever and then just...
So the, the important thing to understand, this grant, I guess my question is to answer, because I'd like to speak to what Cash is talking about. Cause, cause I agree with him. If we're going to address this river, we got to address it all the way. So I understand that certain funding is going to be limited to the bridge. That, that's a given. But what we've asked Fitzgerald to put together is going to be the whole distance, correct? Okay.
That's what we approved previously at the other select... That's the entire thing.
I just want to make sure that we were clear on that, that there's, there's certain funding that's going to be specific to the bridge. But what we're asking Fitzgerald for is a plan so that hopefully future funding can address the whole stretch.
With a full maintenance.
Yeah, that, that wasn't purposely for that.
No, that's what I'm saying. I, I think there was some, I wanted to make sure we all understood what we were talking about.
Well, that, and I think the long-term maintenance wasn't originally part of this.
Correct.
Also.
Correct.
It was an added value that he's, he just sees it, you got to do it. He, you know, he really stressed that to the state when he went down there.
So what you're talking about is from seven B all the way down to Otter Creek?
Uh, probably just above where they, just above where they stopped, um, doing the...
They tuck the berms down?
The berms, yeah.
So what happened?
Yeah, because I think you'll see in that, um, part of it, I don't know if it's that report or if it was an older report I'm looking at, but he mentioned doing some, uh, engineered log, um, retaining laws, so to speak, that basically, um, aim high water toward the floodplain and actually opening up that floodplain channel like twenty to, twenty to thirty feet wide.
Above the bridge?
The middle of the bridge, yeah.
Above.
That floodplain that we were supposedly opening up to the north.
That didn't...
But might be...
Kurt, Kurt took the Terry off, but they didn't finish the project because they ran out of funding.
That's what I said, where they ran out of money.
This is the issue with this. They'll start, yep, we're going to do the whole thing. Next thing you know, no, we don't have enough funding. And then when they do the upper section from Route seven to Middle Road and a little bit beyond that bridge, they're going to create, okay, I have no problem with that, but the problem is you're going to open up flow. You're going to have velocity, you're going to have volume, and guess what gets it done down below?
Yep.
The whole thing needs to be done or forget about it all.
Cause it would have done stuff below.
Yeah, cause it's...
I've already lost twelve acres of land down there, crap land. The river's gone down through it. I got pictures on my phone or welcome, anybody wants to come down and see it. Looks like a river been there forever across cornfield.
Well, I agree. I agree.
So, I mean, again, the big thing is the Fitzgerald plan so that we can hopefully get access to the other funding is for everything. It's going to take into account what Cash is talking about.
Yes.
That's what, like, cause I, I agree. I mean, I, I don't want to see us just write something for Middle Road to Route seven. I mean, we need, we need to do, we need to talk about all of it.
No, no, not the whole.
That's the whole deal.
That's what we were replying about months ago when we decided.
Okay.
So you guys are going to work on putting something together and then writing something up?
Yes.
Yeah, make something up, just email it.
Send it around to us.
And, uh, critique the wording and if you see a sentence that needs, could be, you know, transposed or whatever with a few word, few different key words in it, you know, some of the jargon that the state likes.
It's called shucking and jiving.
Yeah.
So I, I don't think we need a motion for that. We're just wait, we're just going to wait for language.
Yes.
Yeah.
Let's do it. All right, Kingsley Bridge weight limit, you want to speak to that, Ashley?
Mr. Chairman, I think we can make short order of this. I know our biggest concern was ambulance and the fact that next to nothing was allowed on that bridge. And based on this email from the state, I would make a motion that we go ahead and repost, um, the bridge for ten tons.
Second.
All right, is there any further conversation? I was thinking six tons, but...
You said ten, ten, Robert?
That's what you said. They said that we could post it from anywhere from eight to ten. What's your thoughts?
Yeah.
The trouble is when you put it up that high, then you have bigger vehicles going through. And so while the weight may be the height limit, people won't pay attention to it.
Well, I think Mike's concerned about like box trucks going through there, oversized, you know, height and width. You know, even though they weigh seven, eight ton.
Well, so Mike, I was going to ask a question about would we be wise to invest and put some height bars on either side ahead of it so that there's a height bar across there so they hit the height bar before they hit the bridge? I mean, just put, just put something up so that they're going to hit that before they hit the bridge.
Yeah. Back to those six feet.
What about an H-beam across?
Yeah.
That actually, would it be reliable?
It would be guaranteed. It would ring like a church bell when they hit it.
When, uh, when you look at the bridge, yes, it's ten foot eleven or whatever, but angles. So that's where, you know, your...
Problem is.
Problem is.
So our concern is more the height going through it.
Yeah.
Than even the wave.
Yeah, oh, I agree.
If you off the, the weight, you would be...
Right.
I mean...
You got to look at both factors together.
We've, we've got information. I'm willing to rescind my motion and not do it tonight and let's come up with a plan for an H-bar or whatever. I mean, I, I'm good with that. We've got our information. So we know that it's definitely weighted for more than what we're posting it for. And like Eddie said, right now, last meeting, I think you said it, right now it's posted in pickup truck, shouldn't even be going across it.
Right.
I mean, you know, so, I mean, most vehicles in reality is unless you're driving a car, shouldn't be driving across it. So we know it's weighted for more than that. So if we need to put some preventative measures in before it so that we prevent the box trucks and the others from hitting it.
Hit it or...
Let's, let's, let's invest in that. Let's put something up and then let's...
But meanwhile...
Go ahead and do that.
Before we do that, you're still going to have your average pickup truck going through there, which is...
Correct.
So if we just temporarily then put a six-ton limit on there, then all the pickup trucks of today would be legal to go through there.
Yeah, my home ton could go through six ton.
What's that?
Twelve thousand pounds would get, even on some of the home tons.
I'll revise my motion because it hasn't been seconded yet then, and I'll go to six for tonight. But I think we need to look into some other measures.
Right. But sure.
If I remember correctly, I did second it.
Oh, you did.
But I'll second, do a revision.
Okay.
All right, there's been a motion made a couple times, seconded a few times. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Is somebody going to check on, on what these bars cost?
Need to.
For the next meeting?
Is that something you're willing to research, Ashley?
Yeah.
Thank you.
What's that?
Do you want to keep that?
Sure.
Okay.
You have a question, you need it?
No, I've, I've got it.
Change the sign for the three tons? Or should we just contact the sheriff's department and say?
Yeah, we, we've got to change them. Yeah, we've got to change them.
We've been working on it, Ashley. We'll have somebody go up and paint over the three and put a six on it. Kevin, do you have any?
Yeah, if you do it that way, it's going to look like some...
Run up.
Vandal did it.
And you got, and their signs, road signs before it too, right?
Yeah.
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 Yeah, so they ordered new road signs. It's got to be done, right?
All right, Kevin?
What's that?
Yes?
Okay, so I'd like to address the issue of two fences in the Marsh and the Flat Cemetery. Quick, Title eighteen, chapter one twenty-one, subchapter fifty-three, seventy-six. Fences are supposed to be proper, broken or maintained or this, this, I never. But some big risks is it doesn't say it can't be removed. My point is that cemetery, the Marsh Cemetery, when they took out those three great big maples, I don't know if it was, I don't know, Dara, I don't know if it was, um, Norah. They, they stopped two of them, I took the first come down a year, two years ago. But they just cut the page wire off and tree glue around and just like these two great big gap holes in the fence. The gate doesn't meet the poles, the, the pulser line, the wooden poles for majority of the, the Marsh Cemetery. The problem with, uh, the flats is whether whoever, the push of snow, people back into it, the pulser bent and the, the gate doesn't work. Oh, that works, but it doesn't, once again, it doesn't meet. It looks like, uh, all the way down through. I saw in the past about getting one of those, uh, like West Street Cemetery, you see those light metal, uh, white aluminum, white steel, black fences that you put on some cemeteries. But one or two years after, you know, whoever pushing snow, whether they pushing along it, we pushed, we'd have, you know, bent and twisted a lot. So my other proposal is one of the things that I notice when I drive around, I notice that cemeteries have fences on. Majority of the cemetery, fifty percent more have fences. Our largest number, they all have fences. And if you go west around Pleasant Street, make the left, there's no fence, you know, along Pleasant Street. One, everybody would be involved wherever it was riverside, you drive into Woodstock, just before you hit Woodstock, go after that, they cemetery, they have no fences, just open field. And so my proposal would be to remove both those fences. You know, they're hard to maintain them out, they're hard to keep your grass down, you know, around them, you know, just remove them. I mean, we don't have enough amount of livestock that we used to have. Certain farmer has corrected it ever since four years ago, took the position, I'll send someone, there was someone that called when certain small bullvine might be in the flat cemetery from, um, farmer, you know, after two, three times. I mean, the basic, uh, the answer was I go down there, I stand there, they look at me and they find a way out, you know. But, uh, we don't have, and that's been corrected, so we don't have a lot of livestock around, you know, clearing anymore, a lot. So my proposal is just remove them completely along the whole front of the flats. Maybe one or two sections along the town outside, just take that fence out completely, mow, break from the road, right into the cemetery. The same thing with the Marsh. Take that section out along the road and maybe the section out along Brad Gildens. Take that right out, make it just mow, it'd be wide open. I'm in advisory issue, it's your decision to make. I'll have to delay, you know, it's going to be a slow process. You know, Cash really likes to come up with projects because especially the one in the Flat Cemetery. All those pulser set in concrete, so we don't have to be dug out or, you know, something big to chain it up.
That, those fences that you're talking about don't seem to be in the best condition as they stand or sit right now.
No.
And so my, my thought would be...
My thought would be to go ahead with your plan, that's for a minute.
Um, I guess mine would be just because we've had snow plow issues, especially on the corner of the flats. Can we put a couple big boulders or something just so, you know, that the snow plow hits something rather than hitting that marble? Cause there is a marble where one of the spires is right there off of the...
Well, that's, it's twelve quarters, it's about eighteen, twenty feet back.
Depends who's running the plow.
All right.
Depends who's running the plow, that's all I'll say. That's all I'll say. No, I'm not, I'm not, and I'm not saying specific to him, I'm just saying that the reality is, and I plowed snow for a long time. If it's a wailing of a winter and we're getting snowstorms every two weeks, you're pushing snow back as far as you possibly can because you're making room for the next one, especially if it's early.
I mean, I imagine down the road, we could just put some stuff on it, some pole stuff, put a flag in it.
Sure.
Just don't...
We just got to take, that, that's all I'm saying.
A lot, a lot of the time, they push north and south. They come in, push north and south. And, you know, even that creates pressure. If we put all those light metal fences there, it'd be, it'd be all twisted up.
Yep.
I personally would just like to do, you know, do a way of both of them. And, but that's the decision. The only thing that has always concerned me about that is the fact of someone being able to, some recklessness or some, you know, we saw what happened in these clearing and someone decides to drive right off the road and there's no fence there anymore. But if they want to do that, there's no gate that's working on it.
The only thing I suggest if they did take it down from that corner post, it's all fence and crap.
Right. That's got to mow.
Since I've been here, I was wanting to straighten it out, never got a chance to, is remove that section if you want to remove it. That's my opinion, but also put another post there for a guide for the snowplow. Not to get too far.
I mean, the thing is, we can pull one off, going down through and put it in there.
Yeah.
I mean, but that'd be more, I mean, that's going to require you, an excavator.
Excavator, bang.
No, the issue. But I would just like you just to take it right out, but then you could put a sign on that post. Well, the, say what cemetery it is. Well, eventually down the road, that's coming too, but we'll, for babysitter.
Anyways, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
I, I move that we approve the suggestion presented to us by our cemetery expert of removing those sections of fence that he discussed this evening.
Do you second?
I'll second it.
All right, is there any further discussion? All right, hearing that, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go, Kevin, go.
Anyone opposed?
Yeah.
You're opposed?
He's pulling your leg. We need, we need one post there for a guide to go down through.
Yeah, I think you're right.
And a lot of that fence got bent by the...
The private contractor.
No, the people that parked from crowds of the church.
Yeah. Oh, I believe it.
I get into it.
Yeah.
Yeah, quite often you'll see them right up against the...
Yes.
All right, uh, Town Officers Report, do you have anything else, uh, Kevin?
No.
Bob, do you have anything? How do you, how?
Maybe ask.
No.
It's upon here.
You got it.
No.
We got a list. Laurie's got a lot to say.
Who?
Laurie, right over there. Raise your hand, Town Park.
I didn't even see...
Laurie's got a long list.
Laurie, do you have anything you want to report?
No.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize. I didn't realize you were there. All right, uh, we have an executive session, but let's go. Do you have any concerns, Cash?
Nope, and I'm sure George doesn't either. Mike, do you have anything?
Not really.
I do not have anything.
I have one question. Um, what's the status on the guardrails for that bridge on Walker Mountain Road? Have you heard anything?
Haven't heard nothing.
That's the gate.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we enter into executive session for a personnel matter.
Executive?
Do you want to go second? Is there a second? Hold up in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?